It's on, but it, nothing's coming through. I'd like to call to order the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone is parking for this meeting or using the bus, you may pick up a pass from security on your way out. It will be valid for today only. I have an ethics reminder for the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote. Does anyone from the public, as we move to our consent agenda, have any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Any commissioners? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Moore, second by Whitesides, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move into public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. Please be sure to state your name before you begin speaking. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. The board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject previously presented to the board during the same meeting. One note, a group can elect one person to speak for ten minutes if eight people in attendance relinquish their right to speak on the issue. I think right now we have one person signed up for public comment, Marty Benson. It's right here. Yes. You'll have three minutes, Mr. Benson.
I think my friend Nick would like to speak after me, too. My name is Marty Benson. I'm an attorney in town. I do some activism work with Strong Towns and Asheville for All. Strong Towns is an organization dedicated to building and maintaining resilient community, something that's never been more important to Buncombe County than right now. I'm speaking on my own behalf, though. I went to the Board of Adjustment meeting last week, to the early morning session, and the two items that were heard, the first one involved three hundred and fifty-some-odd apartment, apartments in five buildings down in South Asheville, and it was only approved on the condition that they earmarked some adjacent parking for use by the people who lived in those apartments. Only when the property owner relinquished that surface parking, in excess of the parking the property owner thought that needed to be there, the developer thought that needed to be there, would they permit those units to go in at the Board of Adjustment last week. The second was deviation from an original parking regime that had been set up for some rental condos that were now going to be used as, re-designated as fee simple townhomes. That variance or deviation was wholesale rejected on the basis that it didn't meet the minimum parking requirements imposed by the county's ordinance. Some research has recently come out of Colorado saying that the most efficient way to encourage housing development in a community, the most efficient regulatory change to be made, is to either radically reform parking requirements or wholesale abolish them. In Buncombe County, last week, we made housing contingent on providing excessive parking, and then we rejected the building of new housing based on the fact that it didn't hit our parking ordinance requirements. I'm here to plead that we agendize the opportunity to radically reform or abolish our mandatory parking minimums because they are stopping us from building housing. We had a huge housing crisis in this region in August, and then Helene hit and called into question the prudence of building on a whole lot of our real estate in the region, and also decimated and destroyed dozens of thousands of homes conservatively. So it's time to eliminate these parking requirements, and I hope that you guys will agendize that. I'm easy to find. My name is Marty Benson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Please come forward. And please share your name with us before you speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for taking some time for this. My name is Nick Levine. I'm also with Marty in the same organizations, Strong Towns and Asheville for All. Marty speaks very eloquently and does a great job at providing information to back his support for eliminating these parking minimums. I'm going to be a little bit more plain and simple. I went to one of those white elephant things and got, or white elephants gift exchange and got a checkers board, and the way that I see it with this parking minimum requirements is that when you're moving the checkers and beginning the game towards one area, you can only go in one direction. Once you get to the end there, you're free to move back and forth. You can go in many different directions. So where we're at right now is the beginning of the game. We're just moving in one direction with these parking minimum requirements, but now we've kind of upgraded, hopefully, if we change our rules, into being able to move into many different directions. So again, just encouraging along with Marty that we reconsider this, especially at this time when this is so critical to have more housing built more regularly without these requirements that are holding us back from being a better Asheville than we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening? Thank you both. We do not have any good news this evening, so we'll move into our first presentation, our first quarter financial update for FY two thousand and twenty-five. And Melissa Moore, our Finance Director, is here for the presentation.
Good evening. So tonight's report will cover the first quarter of our current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-five. This reporting period covers July first, two thousand and twenty-four, through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. It represents one quarter, twenty-five percent of our reporting period. So looking at our general fund revenue, our amended budget is four hundred and forty, four hundred and forty point four million for the, for the entire year. Our year-to-date actual revenue is fifty-two point one million. That represents twelve point two percent of our budget, and it is a three point eight percent increase over prior year. You'll see our ad valorem or our property taxes. Property taxes received through the end of September represent thirty-three point four million, or sixty-four percent of those annual and budgeted revenues. Sales tax, you'll see the annual budget in the blue bar, but you'll see zero there. Sales tax is on a three-month lag, so this representing the first three months of the year would have no reported sales tax at this time. So shifting over to our expenditures, so the annual budget for expenditures, four hundred and forty million, point four million, and for the year, our year-to-date actuals are ninety-five point two million. Governmental is representing a twenty-two percent spend for their annual budget, and a significant portion is the twenty percent of the human services budget. Education, it's broken up evenly throughout the year, so it's always going to be exactly even at the twenty-five percent of their annual spend. So looking at the expenditures by category, again, year-to-date actuals, ninety-five point two million. I'm looking at salaries and budget, we're at thirty, salaries and benefits, excuse me, thirty-six point one million, capturing thirty-eight percent of their annual budget. Looking at operating expenditures, we're twelve million or twelve percent. Program support, thirty-five point nine million or thirty-eight percent. Shifting to the solid waste fund, with an annual budget of sixteen point five million, your year-to-date actual revenue is three point three million, predominantly received through yourselves and services, collecting twenty-eight percent of the annual budget portion. Looking at our expenditures, again, a sixteen point five million annual budget, year-to-date actuals of two point one million, represents twelve, twelve, almost thirteen percent, twelve point nine percent of the annual budget, and representing eleven point five percent increase year-over-year. Looking at our capital funds, these are the county capital projects. Your life-to-date budget for those projects, they're multi-year projects, hundred and fifty-four point six million. Life-to-date actuals for those projects, fifty-two point eight million. Year-to-date actuals is one million. Some of the significant projects that we're making and projects on are our Fleet and General Services Complex, our EMS, East Base Construction, and Facility Renovations. That concludes my Q1 presentation, and I'll retain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Melissa. Are there any questions for her? All right, I don't think we have any questions at this time. Thank you so much. We have our Continuum of Care Quarterly Update, and Lacey Hoyle, our Homeless Program Manager, is here to provide that for us.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am happy to be here tonight for the first time since the storm to give you all an update on Continuum of Care activity. I wanted to start with some board activity that's occurred. Notably, there have been a couple of recommendations to the Asheville City Council, the first one being to support the modification of a deed restriction on the former Ramada site. You may remember that that site was initially supposed to be all permanent supportive housing with supportive services provided by the Veterans Administration as well as Homeward Bound. The COC Board recommended a deed restriction to City Council such that there are now fifty units of veteran permanent supportive housing and fifty units of affordable housing for folks who are at or below fifty percent AMI. City Council did vote in favor of that modification. The second recommendation, because of the change in the Ramada project, there was five hundred thousand in city ARPA funding that was previously authorized for that project for supportive services for those permanent supportive housing units that was now on the table, needed to be obligated for homeless services. The COC Board decided to recommend that two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of that funding be allocated for Code Purple response this year in accordance with the budget that was received by the sole provider that responded to the request for partnership for that, that was ABCCM. And the board also recommended that the remaining two hundred and twenty-two thousand of that ARPA funding be designated for emergency shelter and supportive services. After the storm, the COC Board approved an amendment to our COC's coordinated entry policy to account for the Back at Home program, and that is state funding for rapid rehousing for survivors of the storm. And so the policy amendment essentially states that if a household is approved for that program, then they are prioritized for disaster rehousing, and they don't need to go through the regular pre-disaster coordinated entry process for housing placement. The board also has approved a new application cycle to fill vacant COC Board seats, and that process is underway now with the Nominating and Membership Committee reviewing applications and interviewing applicants now in anticipation of submitting a new slate of candidates for the board to vote on very soon. And then the board also established three new work great, work groups, excuse me, since my last update to you. So that's a, there's a coordinated entry work group. The coordinated entry system is, is our housing placement system for folks who are on our, who are unhoused and who are on our by-name list. So this work group is going to basically be working to overhaul that system, which was one of the recommendations put forth by the National Alliance to End Homelessness in the Within Reach Report. There's also a point-and-time work group that is now active. They are planning for that count for January of two thousand and twenty-five. And then there's a work group that has been formed to explore possibilities as they relate to compensation for people with lived and living experience of homelessness who may be doing work on behalf of the Continuum of Care. And then last but not least, the COC Board voted to approve the consolidated application for HUD COC funding, and I'm going to tell you just a little bit more about that now. I've spoken with you all about this funding source before. It's our largest funding source for permanent supportive housing in our community. Eligible activities are programs that support homeless individuals and housing those individuals. The consolidated application deadline is typically in the early fall. It was extended for our community to December eleventh, following the storm, and that application has been submitted. The COC Board approved this application at their meeting in November, and you can see here that this, this funding supports rapid rehousing for HelpMate. It also supports the large majority of permanent supportive housing through Homeward Bound, as well as providing some support to the city of Asheville and their capacity as lead agency for the COC. I wanted to also just share a little bit about the COC's response to the hurricane. You may remember that before the storm, service providers and public safety staff worked very quickly to provide quite a lot of direct outreach and communications to unsheltered individuals to facilitate access to Code Purple locations, and ABCCM opened their Code Purple sheltering locations on September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. One of their locations, the Veterans Restorations Quarters, did experience some flooding, and so there was an evacuation out of that location and to the County Red Cross shelters as a result of that. After the storm, lead agency staff and county staff were performing regular outreach, site visits, and calls with shelter providers and housing agencies to assess needs and to facilitate access to information and to resources. Many service providers and lead agency staff and county staff coordinated with the Red Cross on a missing persons list that was specific to our unhoused population, and we were able to locate a good portion of the folks that were on that list. Service providers also connected individuals with FEMA for assistance, and there was, there's coordination with the Red Cross to support shelter residents and to solve for the continued shelter need. And then last but not least, I wanted to give a shelter update. Code Purple shelters are open for the season. ABCCM is operating at Transformation Village for Women and Children, and they secured an alternative location for men at Twenty Twentieth Street, which has been operational. Utilization for Code Purple has been typical for the season so far. It typically starts off a little low and then grows the more instances that we have of Code Purple and the colder it gets outside as the season continues. Once the Red Cross ceased their disaster sheltering, the Rescue Ministries kind of picked up where they left off with a lot of support from the Red Cross, and they are currently operating a shelter for folks affected by the disaster at the Gold's Gym location on Hendersonville Road. That is open through December thirty-first of this year. Buncombe County DSS staff and a couple of other service partners are supporting shelter resident transitions, and I want to just take a second just to give a huge shout-out to Buncombe County DSS staff. Those social workers have been working very hard to figure out solutions for the folks that have been in that shelter. As of this afternoon, we're down to about twenty-two individuals left, and we have good plans in place for the, the majority of those folks and are working on plans for the folks that we don't have solidified yet. As far as the county ARPA-funded projects, Safe Shelter's permitting process is ongoing. That's happening with the city. They do have five additional beds already in operation for Code Purple support right now. Haywood Street Respite is anticipating that their construction on their site to construct that second floor and elevator shaft will begin April first, two thousand and twenty-five. They're going to move to an alternative location in March. They're searching for that location now, and then depending on the size of that location will determine how quickly they're able to bring their new beds online. The Salvation Army has resumed regular operations. They did have a few days where they were out of commission because of the lack of water, but as soon as they were able to, they began operating again, welcomed back most of their residents who had been there before the storm. Those folks had gone to the Red Cross shelters when the Salvation Army was closed and then came back, and they're also taking in new folks. They are pretty much maintaining their pre-storm capacity and utilization, and they've also been supportive, as has Safe Shelter and the Respite actually, in helping us figure out solutions for some of those folks that are at the Gold's Gym right now. Any questions?
I have a quick question. One, thank you for all the work that you're doing with the Continuum of Care. You're hitting all the vulnerable groups, everyone we can think of that need us most right now, so we're very grateful for your work and the collaborations there. Secondarily, I did want to ask, what is the plan for, I see the Western North Carolina Rescue Ministry is operating at Gold's Gym, that's through the thirty-first. What's the plan for those who are still impacted by the disaster long-term beyond that? Is there any discussion about where we should be looking or bracing ourselves for what that might look like in two thousand and twenty-five?
Yeah, the, the COC has a shelter work group that's operational and has been very active and in discussions about exactly that. The Rescue Ministries has also been kind of having conversations and looking around at different locations for, for potential usage. Nothing really has been decided at this point. I think the work group needs to continue to do some work to figure out what our capacity needs may be as it relates to individuals affected by the storm at that point.
And I only ask not to put pressure on you all. I know you're, you're doing a lot of hard work there, but folks in South Asheville that have been impacted are greatly curious about that. That's a very proximate, helpful location.
Absolutely, yeah.
Are there any other questions for Lacey? Thank you so much, Lacey. We appreciate your work. Our last presentation for the evening is our School Consolidation Study update, and Rachel Sawyer, Strategic Partnerships Director, is here to provide more information.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I am here to share an update about the School Consolidation Feasibility Study to remind us what has occurred so far, where we are, and what will be coming up for us in the next couple weeks and couple of months. This is a procedural update. We don't have the report in hand. This is about getting the report and what to expect when we do. So as a recap, and for anyone who might be following along and hearing about this for the first time, this is a project that came to us through the state of North Carolina. In the fall of last year, in September, the governor signed into law a requirement that we locally study the feasibility of a merger of the two public school systems. The Asheville City Board of Education and Buncombe County Board of Education both voted to name Buncombe County Government as the lead entity to, to conduct that study, and the Board of Commissioners, your board, took a vote in October of last year to accept that role. We include the full text of the legislative mandate in your materials in case you'd like to reference that information. Some high points here is that it's a mandated study between, with participation from both public school systems, and that the study should consider economic as well as educational impact and other relevant information. So receiving this mandate and understanding that we have until February of two thousand and twenty-five to submit it to the state, Buncombe County, in its, in its role as lead entity, went quickly into action forming a local project team. So the two school superintendents and county manager appointed members to make up this twenty-four-member project team. Some of the folks on that team are staff of the government or the school systems with administrative expertise in topics relevant like finance and facilities and HR, and other members on this team were there because of the experience they have as a teacher, a student, a principal, a parent, et cetera. This team came together and designed the solicitation, so we, the county government, even though we're the lead, didn't conduct the study ourselves as staff. We hired out to do that, so this local project team really worked on the scope for that solicitation, and we have been doing coordination as the study has been underway, and the school, the school systems contributed very significantly in making themselves available for interviews, sharing data points, which we'll go into just in a little bit more depth in a moment. Briefly, this is a refresher of the firm that is conducting the study on our behalf. As the lead entity, you will also recall that Buncombe County took responsibility for funding the study, so appropriating general fund was the decision of the Board of Commissioners to cover the cost of the study. We have been, and I believe are still in conversations about seeking to have state funding to reimburse that cost. But the scope of work when we wrote the contract was very much shaped by that local project team who said equity, data, both quantitative and qualitative, as well as community engagement should be foundational elements of the study, and that it should be rigorous and comprehensive. So there's a long list of terminology on there of areas that they wanted to make sure we're looking at. Student membership, academics, student well-being, policy and procedure. I won't read this slide, but it really, the, the goal was to be, to, to be wide and deep in the, in the study. So the firm conducted nearly ninety days of onsite work. That, I mentioned those data requests. It's over a thousand different elements that they requested and our schools provided or our county government provided for analysis. They hosted focus groups. We had fifty-five members of, representing community-based organizations that are in the education arena to participate. They conducted a hundred and sixty-eight interviews with key personnel, maybe some of you all participated in those, held ten open public community forums, collected seventy-two-hundred-plus survey responses from various parties or various roles, and held thirty-five school observations. And the good news that allows me to stand here tonight is that most of that happened before the end of September. This firm is based out of Charlotte, and so they've been checking on us and keeping in contact with us, and they've been able to carry out their data analysis and their report writing and the creation of their findings and recommendations in the last three months of the calendar year. That was already the piece of the timeframe dedicated to that, so the tropical storm did not interrupt the project. More information about community input, and you'll see more of this when the report comes your way. comes your way. When they went out to the community, they asked what should the deciding factors be based on people's opinions and perspectives? How satisfied are they with the different school services? What are some priorities and concerns? All of this is going to come together in a final report. The firm owes us a report as well as a set of slides and an executive summary to go with that. And that will be in hand no later than December 31st. Our intent here is to do two things simultaneously when we receive that report. It will be marked draft. We will send it to the local project team. The vendor has been fact-checking information all throughout and they're not going to put any information in the report that they don't have a high level of confidence about, but we still want to have a draft version so that we can check and make sure that names of schools are all correct or whatever incidental, if there were any corrections. Our project team will get it the same day that we forward it to our county manager and superintendents to cascade to their boards. So you all can have it for a couple of weeks before the meeting that is scheduled as a joint city, city school board, county school board, county commission meeting, which is on January 16th. So you'll have it. It's not a publication version, but we want you to be able to digest and review that material so that you can appear at that meeting and ready to have a successful dialogue. You'll get a presentation from the consultant of the material and then there will be an opportunity for discussion. The findings and recommendations are due to the state by February 15th. The contractor is providing us the report that will include both findings and recommendations. There has been some discussion both here and at the schools about an opportunity to endorse and/or comment on the report and its findings and recommendations. If this board or either of this, or either or both of the school boards would like to endorse the report and its findings and recommendations or comment on them, you may do that. It's not something that's required. If it's done prior to us submitting the report on February 15th, we've made the option available to all three governing bodies that we would be willing to include that with our submission. You know, maybe a letter on behalf of the board if that board directs us to include that, we will do that. And the comment and endorsement can also come later on because it's not something that's mandated by law. It's that February 15th receipt of the report findings and recommendations. It's not flexible because it's legally mandated. And that is the end of my procedural update for you.
Thanks, Rachel. I do have a couple of questions that I'll start with. I'm glad to hear that the vast majority of the work had been done prior to the storm. I'm curious about the surveys completed. Those numbers for parents and staff in particular seem somewhat low to me. It seems like there'd been a lot of impassioned responses when folks heard about this. And then I see the numbers of surveys. So do you know if those surveys were, was the net cast widely to every staff member and every parent within both districts to complete? And is there any data broken down to see by school district? Do the numbers of responses compare to the size of the districts as well?
We will have a full amount of the data included in the report and that will allow us to see it not only by district but also by school. Some schools, you could see that from their numbers, they would pop up after a certain day or week that they did some really intensive outreach within the school. Our project team met partway through the survey response period when it was open, looked at what had come in so far, came up with strategies to do more outreach and collect as many surveys as possible. We didn't have a goal number, so I don't have an assessment on whether that's a good survey response, but that is what we've been able to collect.
I have one follow-up question to that. 35 school observations. There's a lot more schools within both districts. Do you have, I think I may know the answer to this, but do you have any idea of how they chose the schools to observe?
That would be a great question that I can take back and that you could ask the consultant. I was alongside during those conversations. Those observations were typically subject-focused. So there was a transportation person, nutrition person, and when they were onsite, they worked with our liaisons. There's an assistant superintendent at both districts to pick out which schools to include in the visit. They aimed for very well-balanced representation between city and county schools. That's not possible to be equal at all times because of the volume of schools. But there were those kinds of things that we kept in mind as we scheduled those observations. I didn't have a direct role in selecting the schools.
Thanks, Rachel. Are there other questions from Commissioners?
I have one.
Yes, Commissioner Whitesides.
I'm curious to know, since this was a state mandate for us to do the survey, but they forgot to give us any money to do it and it costs over $300,000. Will they be reimbursing us for that? Because what we're going through now, where are we going to find the $300,000, $300,000? But the concern I have is they need to pay for it, which needs to come from the legislature.
The answer to your question is I hope so and staff will continue using the channels available to us to make that ask.
Would it help to have a letter from the commission?
I think the ask has been made several times and we have been told it is coming. We just haven't seen it yet. We don't know when that is going to happen, but that ask has been made and the delegation has acknowledged that the ask has been made.
It's just like it's coming for Helene too. Okay.
Are there other questions?
Question, just a procedural issue. I know this is something that a lot of our community has cared deeply about and has been a topic of discussion for quite some time. What, in terms of, I'm not going to say endorsement, but comments, if we were to offer some kind of additional discussion of need that comes post-Helene and us reassessing things that we might be looking at. I understand that it's not required, so there's no formal deadline. Realistically, is February 15th the deadline to actually get eyes on it practically speaking? Or what's best practice here?
I don't have a precedent of having gone through an experience just like this before. We'll be submitting it via email to a legislative subcommittee at the North Carolina Legislature. What happens once it's received on their inbox and the pace at which it gets considered isn't, isn't something that I have insight into.
So in theory, it might be helpful for us just to put everything we want them to look at in the letter on the 15th so we can assure that at least goes out what they do with it from there is their business.
Yep. And we've worked with the superintendents and the county manager to look at available meetings between January 16th and February 15th. Should you all wish to have an item on your agenda, we have a way to help facilitate that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And I wanted to say thank you for getting, giving us the information ahead of time so that we can review it and read it before then we sit down to discuss it.
Even if that falls on New Year's Eve.
I know each of us look forward to that report, as do many members of our community, as well as employees across both school districts and families. And I do appreciate Commissioner Whitesides and Rachel U as well continuing to remind folks, this was put upon us by the General Assembly. This was not something that any county commissioner or the Board of Commissioners as a whole requested from the General Assembly. So we will not forget that moving forward. We did not ask for this. So we do look forward to that report and learning more after the first of the year.
Thank you.
Or potentially New Year's Eve as well. Thank you, Rachel.
Commissioners, I will add that this is part of your legislative agenda to get reimbursed as well. So that has been.
Thank you for that reminder.
Yeah.
We do not have any public hearings this evening, but Manager Pender has a Hurricane Helene update.
Thank you, Chairperson. I'm still struggling with Chairperson or Chairwoman, so Chairwoman Edwards. For my report this evening, I'll be providing an update on Helene's impact on Buncombe County, detailing our progress in recovery, our ongoing priorities as we move forward and resources available to the community. As you know, we're working with our federal and state partners, our local municipalities and private contractors to address the full spectrum of our residents' needs as efficiently and effectively as possible. We're using the seven recovery support functions as a way to organize and communicate about the recovery. You will see here in, and in more detail as we go through this, there's some overlap in county services in some of our departments and our partners that are providing this service. We are fortunate to have developed strong supportive relationships, especially over the past two months, providing us with collaboration we need as we progress through what we know is going to be a long-term recovery. As you know, this, there were seven. I'll go back real quick. This is the framework with debris management, economic recovery. And I'll go through each one as we go through the slides, starting first with debris management. On the debris management, as a reminder to the public, debris management from your property that can come safely to the curb and the roadway is being picked up now in all areas and all zones of our county. This is an ongoing basis and is focusing on all types of debris in the right-of-way, including mud, soil, silt. And we have five staging locations currently online throughout the county. There will be multiple rounds of debris pickup, so residents do not have to bring all of their debris to the curb at this moment, but, but we know that there'll be several passes and as we come to that final pass, we will make sure we let residents know when that final pass is coming so they can make sure all of the debris that they can manage to come forward do that. We're currently working on a process for collection of title property such as vehicles and vessels. And you'll see there were several stranded vehicles along our roadways, even some in our waterways. We're working on a process right now. And you'll hear more about that in the future as plans get solidified. What we are, we did release an RFP for a towing contractor that was published on December 12th and it will close on December 23rd. And that contractor will be a towing company that can now tow those vehicles to a specific location. Our debris task force, they closely monitor this data on a daily basis and that changes daily, as you know. Currently, we have collected over 521,000 cubic yards and that is for the city of Asheville as well as Black Mountain and Buncombe County as we share the same contractor. This, even at 520,000 debris. I have a slide that didn't come up there. Even at 520,000 cubic yards, this is a small, still a small drop in the bucket for the almost 10 million cubic yards that still have to be picked up. So I know residents are getting frustrated seeing the debris in our community, but please know we're working on it and that contractor works seven days a week still picking up debris. Then one of the things that we have worked on is what we call PPDR, which is a private property debris removal. In extreme disaster events, FEMA turns this as an option on that communities can use where the debris is so widespread that it threatens the public health and safety or the economic recovery of our community. And Helene is such, one of those such events. And so FEMA has allowed private property debris removal to be turned on in our Western North Carolina region. In this program, owners that cannot take their debris to the right-of-way, that can't allow to get it, bring it forward to the curb, a contractor will go into the people's property and do that pickup for them. This program also covers demolition of eligible unsafe structures, including removal of hazardous materials like limbs, trees that are leaning or any mixed debris that they cannot move to the right-of-way. Property owners and small businesses may apply for the program online or in person. And after an initial review, an inspection will be scheduled and eligible debris will be tasked to a contractor for removal. At this time, we have received 1,352 applications, 35% of which have already come through application centers, which are located in Asheville, Fairview, Swananoa, Barnersville, and most recently, we opened one in Black Mountain. We continue to focus on the highest impact areas and this is reflected in that map as you can see here, indicating that we are reaching the north and east areas of Buncombe County. The purple dots are applications received, red includes applications and inspections already scheduled, and green are completed inspections. On the PPDR outreach and engagement, we wanted to make sure that we were using several different methods of outreach to our residents to create wide awareness about the public property debris removal program. This includes multilingual communications across a variety of platforms such as you see billboards in different locations, television and social media. We're sharing information on our four in-person locations that I mentioned as well as some special events. And we have navigators, our community navigators, continue to seek out opportunities to engage with residents in our community. We want to make sure people are aware that they can get this debris picked up, even if they can't get it to the streets. The next focus area that we've been focusing on is economic revitalization. Our current priority here is our receiving businesses' health surveys so we have a better understanding of the needs and creating opportunities to retain and support the current workforce. For October, Buncombe County employment rate was 8.8%. Prior to Helene, our county had the lowest unemployment rate in the state and now we have one of the highest. While we're hiring and other workforce development opportunities and efforts are underway, we are also glad to share that disaster unemployment assistance has been extended until January. And we're getting that word out so people can at least apply and get unemployment insurance if they need that. January will be a start, is the start of our social season for many of our small businesses and it would likely be that month that would be the make and break for them to decide if they can remain open. As part of the effort to sustain small businesses, our economic revitalization section, our recovery section, is working with a group of business owners and business leaders to develop a support campaign to encourage local patronage of small businesses, that Go Local program. One of the barriers to recovery for business continues to be the lack of capital, both grants and loans. The continued lack of SBA funding, for example, is a hindrance to rebuilding. Buncombe County continues to monitor tax revenues and economic data. We are, we are anticipating, we have not yet seen the full extent of the negative economic impact after her, after tropical storm Helene. The Asheville-Buncombe Rebuilding Together Business Grant has already had over 800 applications, totaling over $20 million in requests. Mountain Bizworks will be reviewing their applications and finalizing awards decision. Our current priorities are receiving, through coordination with our local business partners, we have 25 organizations who will be participating in our business response planning. The applications for our portion is, has been announced and will be closed and they were announced on 12/13. Asheville Recovery Endeavors, we are grants, offers women own at least 51% women-owned small businesses funds to rebuild and move forward. And these are the resources I want to make sure people can link to these on the message in our chat and they would also be the message on our website that folks can click on if they want to get more information. WWNC, Strong Together and Mountain Bizworks. Including in our economic revitalization is our household financial assistance. Applications are open now and this money helps with mortgage, rents, utilities and other services. These and other programs are shared on our community briefings that we still do three days a week. We have issued articles and press releases through our community engagement team through social media and shared by our community partners. The Housing Assistance Grant covers up to three months' support for rents, mortgage or utility payments. The Individual Assistance Grants administered by Buncombe County currently has 5,210 applications and it will, it will close tomorrow at 5:00 PM. Moving to education. Helping our students recover from lost classroom time and increasing the resiliency of our schools, education institutions and childcare. education institutions, and childcare agencies to mitigate natural disasters is of utmost importance to everyone. Our biggest priority here is ensuring that schools had safe water, restoring enrollment to pre-Helene levels, and providing our children with the social-emotional support opportunities they need to help heal from this trauma. As water test results come in, the schools plan to transition from bottled water to the public water supply. As of this morning, when I did check in with Dr. Jackson, they had 17 schools that have now moved from bottled water to the public water system. Moving to health and social services. One of the most important responsibilities of counties, as you know, is the health and well-being of the community we serve. We support and continue to support health and social services in a number of ways, wholesaling, including through shelters, mass feeding, and medical care. This is still part of our emergency operations center. We're still in emergency response in many cases in this health and human services arena. There are four community care stations still being operated in our heavily impacted areas. These sites have ADA accessible showers, bottled water, laundry, and more. The locations open daily from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in those heavily impacted areas. We will continue to operate these locations and assess the need going into the new year. From October 1st to December 10th, we have given over 37,000 showers, total laundry of 34,660 laundries. The mass feeding efforts has actually been a joint effort between World Central Kitchen and the Red Cross, and over 1,250 meals are served every day for households that are in TSA lodging. Emergency shelter is still open, we heard that from Lacey. We have 28 residents still in the emergency shelter. At the highest, there were 585 people, and now at 28 in that rescue shelter. Our social workers and ABCCM are actively working with partners to assist with individual planning for shelter residents. We anticipate that having all shelter residents transition to temporary housing by December 31st. Continuing on the health and social services, Disaster Supplemental Nutrition Program, or DSNAP, that concluded at the end of October, and 16,950 applications were received in that two weeks, those couple of days period. A mountain, a total of $10,125,000 was awarded in funding for DSNAP here in Buncombe County. 5,100 has applied, county has applied and remained through December 18th, remaining to get assistance. This is that money that you guys, if you recall, that you guys re-appropriated. We have 5,100 applications, and this include the applications that came through Grace Covenant as well. Our LIAPP, our Low Income Energy Assistance Program, $440,000, has already been approved to date, and this, right now, for the month of December, this is only for individuals over 60. This would open up broadly to others starting in January the 1st, but as of today, we've had 1,251 individual households have applied for LIAPP. Also, Crisis Intervention Program, which also helps with utility payments, we've had 1,372 applications for a total of $559,000 being awarded, and this is again, would go as of December 13th for the Crisis Intervention Program. One of the recovery functions that we have done a lot of work on, and have been very busy on, is our next slide of housing. We've been extremely busy in this area as we've been trying to find, moving people from short-term rentals to, well, not short-term rentals in the term that you know, but temporary housing to more permanent housing. This number, housing impact, the number of known confirmed damages is increasing every week, as we do, and we do more inspections and we complete more assessments. These damage figures have been verified by FEMA. There'd be more than 9,000 residential units that have suffered damage, including 331 that were completely destroyed, 609 with major damage, and 8,294 with habitu- repairs that needs to make the house habitable, how about that? Meaning that this, this needs to be considered safe and sanitary, we need to make some repairs to get that house safe and sanitary. While the house may be unscathed, damaged a well or septic system could be a reason for a needed repair. And again, this is all FEMA verified data. And please note that it will change as the scale of the impact continues to change as we do more assessments, so this is the number that we've had as of this past week. A quick timeline here for you, so FEMA Housing Recovery Timeline spans, shows this is how it spans, and I do have my cohorts here working with me from FEMA is in the room, if you have any specific questions on FEMA's, on FEMA work. The short-term recovery, which encompasses sheltering and TSA, we say TSA, but that's transitional shelter and assistance, that is usually measured in days and weeks, as you can see here. And then we will move to more intermediate housing, which still has TSA, but you then move into direct housing, which could encompass people living on their property with a travel trailer, or it could mean moving into apartment complexes as well. So you go from short-term to medium-term to long-term. We could place, FEMA has been working to place units on people's own property where they had the space to do that, or on group sites, like in commercial parks, mobile home parks. For FEMA Transitional Assistance, our TSA, we currently have 1,403 households in hotels. It has been an extension of TSA through January 11th of 2025. However, this eligibility does not guarantee hotel rooms availability. So county staff is providing outreach to assist survivors so they're retained sheltered through the new year, and also providing navigation to help families move from the hotel into more permanent housing. FEMA Direct Housing is a program that provides temporary housing with permanent housing until permanent housing is ready. This can include housing units and rental assistance. At this time, 144, 47 households are approved for direct housing. 16 temporary housing units have been installed on private sites, commercials pads, or group sites, with another 37 in progress. We continue to work to expedite the permitting process for temporary housing solutions, and there is a smaller but parallel work to, on a regional basis, to place households based on individual needs. And what that means is we're working in other counties as well, because as you know, somebody that lives in Black Mountain or Ridge Grass could just as easy lived in McDowell County, so we're looking at a regional approach to where we can place units to help individual households. We've had some changes to our regulations. As you know, back in November, the Board of Commissioners approved emergency housing amendments to facilitate temporary housing. This identified eligible unit types, facilitated reduced setbacks, and allowed for longer-term, under 180 days, residents in travel trailers and RVs. On December 11th, the Office of the State Fire Marshal announced Emergency Rule Number 11 NAC08, which exempts temporary housing structures from permits and inspections if the property owner completes an affidavit that affirms the temporary structure complies with the emergency code. It is important to note that this rule doesn't apply to FEMA temporary units, as they both meet electrical and plumbing requirements. And our contractor that has been assisting us, Tetra Tech, we have engaged with them to do something that is a little not normal, and that is our community navigator team. Tetra Tech has trained community navigators, and they're canvassing the county's help heavily impacted areas in locations such as grocery stores, community centers, libraries, churches, and cultural meeting spaces. They direct individuals to the local, state, and federal assistance programs that best suits their needs. They assist individuals with completing forms and applications for available programs, and provide the county with insight into any trending, unmet needs. The navigators are readily identified by their blue vests, and they all carry credentials. To date, the navigators have assisted 671 survivors, with over 200 of them in the past week. Supporting our residents and meeting them where they are to provide the resources they need continues to remain a top priority for us. Recently, we became aware of questions and concerns about the presence of survivors living in tents after Helene. These concerns included accounts of individuals living in light-lit tents and were spreading through social media from people from all across the country. Buncombe County Emergency Services and FEMA staff, along with our community navigators, they conducted field assessments in several areas to assist to access or assess the living conditions of displaced residents and ensure they were receiving all the resources they needed. Canvassing efforts focuses on Swananoa, Garen Creek, Fairview, and Barnersville, and confirm most of the tents in the affected areas were either heated cold-water tents or not primary residents. Cold-water canvass tents, cold-weather canvass tents are equipped with appropriate heating sources, cooking areas, fire, and carbon monoxide detectors, amount other features. These were also, there were also a few individuals residing in tents or cars who had previously been doing so before the storm, and they declined any assistance. Any person displaced by the storm who do not have a safe, warm place to stay, we are encouraging them to contact us at 828-250-6100 for connection to sheltering and housing resources. That is the One Buncombe Call Center, and we encourage anyone that you come across, or residents come across that needs help, to please reach out, and we can connect them to that number. That again is 828-250-6100. And if they can provide their name and address where help is needed, our staff and these canvassers will go out and try to assist as best as we can. Ongoing support remains available for those who are impacted by the hurricane, so please, again, help us to share that if you need help, there's help that we can get to you. Another busy area for us has been in infrastructure. Our current priorities within the infrastructure area includes private roads and bridges, landslides, and flood plain management. We will continue to monitor and report data regarding these priorities as our team works together towards solutions, including temporary and permanent bridges, covert repairs, slope stabilization, and other rebuilding activities. One highlight from this data is that our permits and inspections office has processed over 1,000 Helene-related permit applications. We are processing permits as quickly as they're coming, with inspections being performed the same day or the next day. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, or you hear us refer to as HMGP, this is a FEMA-funded program but is managed by the state, the North Carolina Emergency Management Department. It is designed to reduce or eliminate future damages and loss following a disaster. This is an important program for our commissioners to be aware of, because it is moving very quickly and has the potential to have a significant impact on Buncombe County. Aspects of this program includes raising the elevation of the home, foundation of a new constr-, our new construction of a home, both at no cost to the property owner, and/or the acquisition of property, which you hear us refer to as a buyout. Destroyed and damaged properties are eligible. The initial priority is those that were destroyed. Residential and commercial property are eligible. But our initial priority right now is on the residential side. The state handles the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, they handle the application intake, the eligibility review, the buyout management, which is pretty much getting that property ready for closing, and construction management and all associated costs. So this, again, is at no cost to the property owner. Applications will be open until November 2025, unless it's an extension, but right now it's one year from date, so right now it's October 2025. Online applications are an option, and we encourage property owners, though, to consider applying in person. That way, they can talk to someone and understand all the ramifications of this program. The next round of in-person application will be the first two weeks of January at the Asheville Disaster Resource Center, which is in the Asheville Mall. To date, over 200 properties have applied for HMPG, HMGP in Buncombe County, including more than 150 buyout requests. Applications are being reviewed by the state on a rolling basis, and the state will have the first set of priorities ready for consideration within the next few weeks. Buncombe County has the rate of refusal of, on all properties. Our staff are currently working to develop a process of responding to approval applications in alignment with our comp plan, and we would bring those to our commissioners to make sure we have your vision on where you want to be on owning these buyout properties, and on a regional mitigation plan that you guys approved prior to the storm.
Yeah, real quick question that, with that, so if this is a state program and we chose for some reason not to proceed with the buyout on one of them, what, what then happens?
I don't know the answer to that, ma'am, but I can find out that. And the reason you guys have to weigh in on this is if the state buys up their property, the county owns it, and as you know, with some properties, it's a lot of restrictions of what you can put on that property after you buy it out. It might be just a agreement, it may stay vacant for a long time. So if it's in a place where you don't want it to be a buyout, then that's the conversation. I have to get an answer of what would happen if we choose not to own the property after the buyout. Thanks for that question. Then, moving on to, I believe, our last area of focus, our last recovery area of focus is natural and cultural resources. And activities and key areas of concern for our natural and cultural resources include focus on water and stream banks, as well as outdoor recreation and community assets. One item that we are monitoring closely is the 300 potential sites eligible for the Emergency Watershed Protection Program. Which I'll give a little bit more details here. Buncombe County residents with damage or severe erosion from Helene, causing a threat to the infrastructure, could be eligible for the U.S. Department of Agriculture Emergency Watershed Program. You hear us talk about EWP. This program consists, assists with repairs and projects such as stream bank restoration, erosion control, and more. EWP also exists specifically for damage, debris cloud waterways, unstable stream banks, wind-borne debris removal, if there's a lot of wind that blew stuff up against your property, and steep slopes that have, that have lost ground cover and are in danger of sliding. We really want to encourage our residents to use, to use that self-reporting. We roll out a self-reporting tool early on at buncombecounty.org, and we would love for our residents to really do that self-reporting by going to that buncombecounty.org self-report into and submit the damage and locations and pictures to us as much as possible. We have, we are starting in January to do those site visits, and we've been using drone footage, but if a resident has some damage that they can send to us, that would be very helpful. So buncombecounty.org, and they can use a self-reporting tool as well.
And is there a deadline on that for them to report it?
I don't believe there's a deadline, but I'll verify if there's a deadline on that. What we are, we are wanting to start going into field starting in January, right after the holidays, so if we can have that data, we can start compiling that data and getting it ready for the state. So this, the more we have, the better prepared we will be. And I do want to end with the information that people can still assess FEMA. FEMA financial assistance may include money for basic home repairs, personal property losses, or other uninsured disaster-related needs such as childcare, transportation, medical needs, funeral, and even dental expenses. The Disaster Recovery Center is located in the Asheville Mall, and it's a one-stop shop where survivors can meet face-to-face with FEMA representatives, apply for federal assistance, receive referral- receive referrals to local assistance in the area. They can also apply for Small Business Assistance, SBA, for lower interest disaster loans and more. FEMA also has a rotating mobile disaster recovery center, and it rotates throughout the county, with upcoming stops would be the Fairview Public Library and the Weaverville Town Hall. I want to make sure I leave this date in people's minds. Individuals who need assistance should apply by January seventh. So please spare that. That was extended from before. Typically, you only get sixty days after an event. This has been extended for Helene, and it goes to January seventh. So far, FEMA has shared that fifty-four thousand three hundred households in Buncombe County have been deemed eligible and for almost eighty-nine million dollars in FEMA assistance, individual assistance in Buncombe County. So right around eighty-nine million and fifty-four thousand residents have been approved and made eligible for help in FEMA. So we're encouraging, January seventh is that deadline. We want to get that information out to every single person that they can apply for help. Even if you don't think you had a lot of damage, apply and go through the process so we can have a full picture of the impact in Buncombe County. And that is my report. If you have any questions or any additional questions, I'll take those in.
Let's have a quick question. I'd see the dates for the Mobile Disaster Recovery Center, which I think is wonderful. Are there going to be dates after the twenty-fifth, sometime between twenty-fifth and the seventh of January?
Yes, and we do put those out. And so the one at the mall is open, as you can see, daily, eight a.m. to six p.m. weekdays, and nine to two on Saturdays. So you can always go there. That is always open. The rotating ones that we try to rotate around the county for folks that can't get to Asheville, those are the dates that are fluctuating. And we will have, and I'll look at Hannah in the room, there will be other dates that we will publish accordingly after the holidays.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Everel, can you share a bit more about the rental assistance once that application process closes? What is the anticipated timeline of reviewing and expending the funds to those in need?
Our local rental assistance? They told me that we will have checks cut by Monday. So it closes this week, and we have already started reviewing applications. As you know, the process will be a lottery process. So we will get all the applications, and as they're being coming in, we've been reviewing them along the way so that we will be ready by Wednesday. The intent would be that we would draw the names from the eligible folks and start cutting checks by Monday.
That's terrific. Thank you. Other questions?
Well, I just have an observation. I'd like to commend you and your staff for the way that we've organized this that makes it a whole lot easier when we see it. I mean, it's not going to be easy. It's going to be tough. But you all do have it organized because a lot of people out there seem to think that we're just operating by the seat of our pants, and we are. You guys are working hard, and you've done a good job of getting this. And I had a good friend of mine, Mundy, from Raleigh, and he wanted to see some of the county. And we rolled around, and you can begin to see some of the debris now. It's not as bad as it was. It's still bad. But at least some of the roadways, we're getting clear. And I know in the city, they're doing a good job picking it up and getting it out of the way.
And you know, we've heard a lot of complaints about the staging sites that are out there. But the staging sites are temporary. It will be temporary for a while, granted. But we do have to pick it up and take it someplace. And the more sites we can have, we don't have to drive it long distance. Those reduce the cost of collections. We have been using the five sites across our county right now. The city has two, and the county has three that we have all permitted. And we're trying our best to get it processed at these sites and hauled off to different dispositions. It would not be here forever. So we have been pretty aggressive in trying to get that debris picked up. Most recently, the Corps, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, along with FEMA, has authorized the waterways pickup. So that's the next thing that we will be working on. But as most of the waterways, you still have to get that right-of-entry, which is the same process, the same intake process we're having to do now for going to people's yards in order to go across people's property to get to the waterways. So that's coming. So there's been a lot of work in the background that's been going on. And you were saying thank you to me, but I will say thank you to the team. I did tap Rachel Sawyer. You saw her early in the consolidation, helped lead this project and helped be the project manager for this recovery effort. And Rachel has been doing that, plus her regular work. And I know there's a lot of work we have to pause at this moment. But our goal has been to still keep county operations going while responding to the emergency. And I would say that staff has done a phenomenal job of getting that work done. But we try to stay under the radar and just do our job. We don't like the fanfare. So if we can just do our job, we'd be happy.
I echo that. You all have done a phenomenal job. This report this evening is incredibly thorough, and I think we are each leaving this evening with a wealth of information that we can also share with residents across Buncombe County when they call with questions, concerns, not quite knowing exactly what is happening. We are well-informed to take those calls and emails as they come to us. So thank you to you and to the entire county staff for all that you are doing to continue to support recovery.
And I would say, I said to Rachel, I also have to say our CAFE team, as they help to put it all together. And our intent would be to back before you every two weeks to give you further advice.
Thank you so much. We do not have any old business this evening. We will move into new business. We have the approval of COVID Recovery Fund allocations, and Tyler Henry, our grants manager, is here with additional information.
Good evening, commissioners. I also have with me Jamie Brown, who is our other grants manager to assist with this presentation. So to begin, I want to provide a quick overview and reminder to the public what COVID recovery funding is. The funding comes from the American Rescue Plan Act, which provided direct, flexible, and funding to state and local governments through the coronavirus, state and local fiscal recovery funds. The county received a total allocation of fifty-point-seven million, which has been dedicated to mitigating the negative economic impacts of COVID-19 in our community. So far, we've funded fifty-three projects, spending a total of thirty-three and a half million dollars. It's important to note that a hundred percent of the allocated funds have been awarded, demonstrating our commitment to timely and effective use of this support and meaning all U.S. Treasury requirements. Spotlight reports for completed projects are available on our website. Each project has contributed to recovery goals, whether it's through housing, healthcare, or economic development. So far, twenty-six projects have been completed as of the date of this meeting, with two more being completed at the end of this month. And now I'm going to pass it to Jamie to discuss the initial community impact.
Good evening, commissioners. So these are a sample of some of the performance measures we've captured from our projects. They aren't inclusive of all measures, and they are self-reported. I do want to point out that these are, they may be a little under-reported due to the impacts of Helene on some of the organizations. We have seen some delays in some of the reporting. And these numbers are through October thirty-first. So in housing, we've... Oh, sorry, I've got my slides a little backed up. So in housing, we've made some significant strides by building a hundred and seventy-four new housing units and completing seventy-six home repairs that are directly improving living conditions for residents. We've seen our investments expand our shelter capacity in the community with forty-two new shelter beds added, providing safe spaces for about four hundred and forty-four individuals. Beyond housing and employment, six hundred and fourteen households received rent or utility assistance during difficult times. And again, I'll stress, this is not inclusive of any work or funding that we've put towards the Helene recovery. And nearly three thousand individuals received crisis support, underscoring our commitment to helping the community navigate challenges brought on by the pandemic. We're going to continue highlighting some of our far-reaching impacts from the funding. Over five thousand individuals and families accessed much-needed mental health and therapy services, addressing increased emotional and psychological stress brought on by the pandemic. We've invested in early childhood education, supporting nine hundred and fifty-four children enrolled in pre-K programming. We've prioritized food security, serving nearly a hundred and eighty-eight thousand meals to families and individuals experiencing hardship. And finally, eight hundred and eight households are being connected to broadband services, improving access to critical services, remote work, and education. Altogether, these efforts have supported over a hundred and fourteen thousand individuals, households, and small businesses, demonstrating the breadth and depth of the recovery efforts from the pandemic through Buncombe County. Next, I want to share a slide. As projects start to wrap up, we're starting to look more closely at the impacts of the dollars in our community. So on September tenth, we had invited all of our subrecipients to participate in listening sessions to share their stories of how the grant impacted their organizations or their service recipients. We've had about twenty-six participants over three sessions. We facilitated, staff facilitated the discussion, but we also contracted with a graphic recorder who listened to the discussions and the stories taking place and highlighted those aspects of the discussion that were common themes, shared goals, and visions, and then specific story highlights that seemed to resonate in the group discussion. The intent of these sessions was to celebrate the work that we've accomplished and acknowledge that there's continued work going on in the community. And this was an initial step. As projects start to wrap up and we start to move through the phase of allocation, as we're approaching the obligation deadline, we'll be doing more to look at the impacts and using the data that's available to see how these dollars have really helped the residents and the community in Buncombe County. And I will turn it back to Tyler to discuss what our upcoming next steps may be.
So to continue meeting community needs, we're proposing reallocations for four projects. And that is reduce funding on clean energy upgrades and to close the project. We have contacted this subrecipient, and they have completed all of their project goals to this date and have completed under budget. And so this is just to reduce by the remaining amount that they are no longer need. We also are reducing funding on three of the projects, community paramedics, capital outlet equipment, and events, same community safety. These adjustments will free up six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for reallocation. With the reallocation of funds, we're proposing to create and fund a new project, personnel costs, which would be in the exact amount that is reduced. And this will fully allocate all remaining COVID recovery funding to address critical staffing and operational needs. Due to impacts of Hurricane Helene, administration costs such as salaries and benefits have increased pressure on the twenty-twenty-five fiscal budget. Reallocating funds will assist in alleviating some of that pressure and allow the county to meet the U.S. Department of Treasury's obligation deadline of twelve-thirty-one-twenty-four. So we're asking the board to consider approval of COVID recovery funding project reallocations as listed. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for sharing all the information on the impacts that these investments have had in our community. And it's really good to see how effectively that basically fifty million dollars originally we were able to get out there and deploy and the impacts of that. So thanks for that update. And just with this personnel, is this due to all the overtime, basically, that our staff has had to work during the storm? Or can you tell us a little bit more about the need?
Basically, with the impacts of the storm, the funding has been pulled all over the place. And so this is one way that we can assist with the pressure that's been placed on this current fiscal year's budget. But at the same time, it also, this specific grant funding source is under a lot of pressure to spend the money as quickly as possible because of the Treasury deadlines at the end of this year.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I'll make a motion to approve the changes of the COVID recovery funding awards as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Wells. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Whitesides has seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you both. We appreciate all your work. And we have next our approval of disaster leave policy, and Karen Marshall, our HR director, is with us.
Good evening, commissioners. Before I delve into the presentation this evening, I just want to give a brief description of how we arrived at the proposal that we're presenting to you. So as you all, we're on the commission, the new commissioner. Just for information, we presented during your November nineteenth Commissioners' Meeting a shared leave approach for the Helene disaster leave policy. And we received valuable feedback from all of y'all in regards to not wanting to have it where our employees had to donate leave to other employees who were impacted by the storm, but to actually have it where we would have leave set up that we would just give to employees. So we took that feedback from you. We have revised our policy, and that is what we'll be presenting tonight. Okay? Here we go. Okay, so just going over some of the things that we shared before. Many employees, I would say, opposed to were impacted, have been impacted by Hurricane Helene. And in some situations, employees have been adversely affected, excuse me. Some of the employees who have adversely been impacted require additional leave in excess of their available leave balance. And in some situations, people would need to use their leave for meeting with contractors to have work done at their home or have other meetings that may pertain to their disaster that has occurred to their residents. So we're recognizing that. This policy establishes a Helene disaster leave program to support employees who have exhausted their applicable leave balances and need additional leave due to the impacts of Hurricane Helene. Eligible employees may be granted up to forty hours of paid leave, which must be used for Helene recovery-related purposes. Leave may be used through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and can be retroactively used by employees who have used leave without pay starting in October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And this is a new section that we added in here. After exhausting Helene disaster leave and other applicable leave, employees may use their accrued sick leave for absences due to Hurricane Helene recovery-related needs. And again, this exception to the leave policy will expire on June thirtieth. We included the sick leave portion. That was comparable to what the state did. And so we just basically mirrored what they did and included that. All requests and personal information related to Helene disaster leave program will be managed by Human Resources and treated confidential, as confidential personnel information. This is consistent with how we handle family medical leave. We handle that confidentially as well. If a recipient separates from employment with the county, any remaining Helene disaster leave will be forfeited. The Helene disaster leave program will end on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, unless extended by the Board of Commissioners. The eligibility requirements remain the same as we shared on November nineteenth. Recipients must be employed in a position eligible to accrue annual leave. Recipients must have exhausted their applicable accrued leave and need additional leave due to the impacts of Hurricane Helene. The recipients must complete a request form to provide appropriate documentation. Our request... Oops, I'm going to pass over here and not going over there. Request to the commission is to... Requested a commission is to approve the Halleen, um, disaster leave policy that's in your pack. And if I can address any questions you may have at this time.
Karen, thank you to you and your team for taking the feedback that we provided in November and coming back with a revised policy for us to approve this evening. I really appreciate the component of making this retroactive as well. I don't think that we had thought about that. So thank you for that particular addition. Commissioners, are there any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve the new Halleen disaster leave policy.
Motion. Motion by Wells, seconded by Horton. Further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
And thank you. And I want to recognize two people from my office, the two Amys. Amy, Amy Davis, Amy Flaherty, they were very helpful in helping me, um, pull all this together. So thank you to them.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Amys. We appreciate y'all. Amy and Amy. All right, and John Hudson, our Budget Director, is here for our budget amendment for disaster rental assistance from the state. How are you, John?
Good. Good evening. This budget amendment accepts $199,296 from the state's Disaster Relief Fund for the purpose of providing rental assistance and a one-time payment to eligible residents. It will be administered through Buncombe County Health and Human Services. Our health, new Health and Human Services Director, David Swett, is here to tell us a little more about the program. Good evening, Commissioners. And so, uh, the state has very recently offered us $199,296 new dollars, earmarked for emergency rental assistance for our residents. Intent of this funding is to allow each eligible recipient, uh, to receive one month of rental assistance. They must be 200, at 200% of the federal poverty level, level to qualify or be eligible to receive these funds. And for a family of four, we're talking about $5,200 a month or $62,400 a year of income. And the limitations on the use of the money is that it's one-time only. So each recipient can only get the funding once, but it can provide fair market rent for, um, at the HUD level and estimated as $1,680. We know that here in Buncombe County, the average rent is about $1,756. So this will provide substantial relief to someone who is in need of emergency, um, rental assistance for one month. Now, based on the amount of funding this is and, uh, dividing it by these, these, um, funding levels, we assume we would be able to help about 112 households with this money. But the reason that we are here before you now is that in order for us to disperse those funds, you must approve us to receive these funds and for John to budget these funds so they can be spent. Our intent is to basically use the same pool of applicants that we are receiving, uh, through the application process that closes tomorrow. We know that the $1.2 million that we have from the county will not be able to stretch far enough to meet all the people who have needs and are, are, uh, because the eligibility, uh, is a little different for this pot of money than the other pot of money, our intent is to expend the county funds first and then look through and identify the, the next eligible individuals on the list who would meet for this pot of money so we can give them this level of assistance. But that'll streamline the process, make it go faster and simpler. We won't have to create a new application process, we'll integrate it into our current work. But what we need is your permission.
Just a quick question. The, um, and thanks for the explanation, and it sounds like you have a wonderful progress. Our process already in line. I'm just curious, because clearly we have more need than that, than what, we appreciate what they're sending. But has there been any, any sense, any communication that this is just the first bid and that there will be more to come?
Uh, since I didn't receive the email, I'm going to turn that over to John. So this is a dispersment from the Disaster Relief Fund created by the first bill in the, in the fall post-disaster. That was about $270 million in that fund. It does appear that there are going to be other pots of restricted revenue coming through. I think there will be some for, for social, for social work. It's unclear that, how the path forward on how much. All affected counties were provided a lot based on a combination of the size of the county and the number of estimated impacted.
Thank you.
So, good, do you have another question?
No, I was just going to make a motion, but go ahead.
All right, so I appreciate the methodology here. County funds first, lease restricted. That's a little bit different parameters for what we can provide in terms of disaster relief, right? Because our, the county program is up to three months, is that, do I remember that correctly from the website?
Correct.
Okay, so that, that, the county program's up to three months. This one would be up to a month, one time for now, contingent upon the state sending us more money. Current stage, we're just accepting this money to supplement our program, which is selfishly better. Is that fair? Okay. I'm glad you said it, I won't be on the spot, John. Well, in that case, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
I do want to correct one thing, it's not that we're using county money first. What he's saying that this would be kind of leveraging, and if that person comes and qualifies for this, we can give them one month, maybe plus something else, so yeah.
Gotcha.
Commissioner Moore has made a motion, and Commissioner Wells has seconded it. Do we have any additional questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you both. All right, our board appointments will resume in January, so we do not have any board appointments this evening. One quick announcement, the next briefing and regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be held on January 7th, 2025. And I believe we do have a need for closed session this evening. Mr. Euler?
Uh, yes, the need for the clo, uh, that, the, a board, someone needs to make a motion to the Board of County Commissioners going to closed session to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, uh, and give instructions concerning the handling of a lawsuit in Buncombe County Superior Court. This is G E Interim Solutions et al versus Buncombe County, 23CVS 4414, and the estate of Mallory Chris versus Buncombe County et al. Uh, this is 1:24CV298, which is in the federal court, which in the Western District of, uh, North Carolina. There will be no formal action taken at this time, and the statutory authority is contained in General Statute 143-318 dot 11, Subparagraph A3.
Thank you, Mr. Euler. Do we have a motion to go?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Whiteside, seconded by Commissioner Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in closed session, and we do not anticipate to return to take any action this evening.
No, you do not need to take any formal action tonight.
Thank you.